We will call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for Tuesday, March 10th, 2020 at 6:30. Please rise for an invocation and remain standing for our pledge, which will be led tonight by our veterans in the room.
Heavenly Father, as preparation for the meeting tonight, we bow before you as our God and Creator. We ask for wisdom, discernment. We seek, Father, for that which is best, for the encouragement of families and lives in this community. So, Father, we pray tonight for that kind of wisdom to be among us, for the resolve to do that which is absolutely best. So, Father, thank you for the people in this room who dedicate themselves for that purpose, to guide this community. Father, also a word of gratitude for those who serve, those who sacrifice, those who protect, those who do not look at themselves with harm, but look for us, to protect us. We thank you, Lord, for those as well, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just justice on all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk Treasurer, would you please take the roll call?
Certainly. Councilman Spann, Councilman Hardaway, Councilman Minchuck, Councilwoman Uselak, Councilwoman Pettit, Councilman White, President Bella.
Here.
President, counterfeiter, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations, we have a proclamation of the town of Maryville declaring March 10th through April 30th census awareness time and proclaiming April 1st as Census Day throughout the town of Maryville. Madam Clerk Treasurer.
Proclamation declaring March 10th through, 2020 through April 30th, 2020 census awareness time, proclaiming April 1st as Census Day in the town of Maryville. Whereas the town of Maryville has partnered with the United States Census Bureau to support the 2020 census, working to make sure our community is accurately represented in the upcoming decennial count. And whereas an accurate census count is vital to our community and residents' well-being by helping planners determine where to locate schools, daycare centers, roads, and public transportation, hospitals, and other facilities, and achieving an accurate and complete count of the nation's growing and changing population. And whereas since the census data helps to determine how many congressional seats each state will have in the United States House of Representatives, I'm sorry, Representatives, and often is used for the redistricting of state legislatures, county and city, and town councils, and voting districts. And whereas the 2020 census creates jobs that stimulate economic growth and increase employment. And whereas the census helps determine how more than $675 billion in federal funds is distributed each year to support vital programs in states and communities across the country. And whereas these federal funds shape local health care, housing, education, transportation, employment, and public policy. And whereas the town of Maryville had a reduction in the census 2010 participation response rate versus the 2000 census, down from 82% in the year of 2000 to just 75% in the last census in 2010, resulting in a decrease in responsiveness. And whereas the town of Maryville had a lower response rate in the 2010 census than neighboring cities of Hobart, Crown Point, and the town of Sherrville. So, we encourage our citizenship to participate to help us to get a complete count. And whereas since each and every resident counted represents over $27,000 in state and federal funding that comes back to the town of Maryville in various forms. And whereas since the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law under Title 13 of our United States Code. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Town Council of the town of Maryville is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure a full and accurate count in 2020. And we ask that all Maryville residents participate in the 2020 census by either responding online to the census when you receive your invitation between March 12th through the 20th, or respond between March 21st through March 31st online at 2020census.gov, or call one of the toll-free numbers using the census ID from your invitation, or provide your address when you respond, or if you receive a paper questionnaire, fill it out and mail it back. As a 2020 census partner, the Town Council of Maryville will, number one, support the goals and ideals for the 2020 census and disseminate 2020 census information to encourage those in our community to participate. Encourage people in our community to place an emphasis on the 2020 census and participate in events and initiatives that will raise overall awareness and ensure a full and accurate census. Number three, support census takers as they help our community complete an accurate count. Number four, create or seek opportunities to collaborate with other like-minded groups in our community by participating in Complete Count Committee and/or utilizing high-profile, trusted voices to advocate on behalf of the 2020 census. Adopted and proclaimed this 10th day of March, 2020, throughout the town of Maryville, where we want everyone to count the town of Maryville Town Council.
Motion approved, Mr. President?
Second. If a motion is second to approve their proclamation as presented, this is probably the last proclamation I ever write. There's just a lot of information to share. Any discussion on a motion? So, it's fun. We're promoting the census, obviously. So, we have some signs there for residents to take. If you'd like to display a sign in your yard, please do so. We're really trying to increase awareness to get an accurate count. The amount of money that comes back to the town is in the millions of dollars if we get a good count. It is so important. So, it's just a reminder to please pitch in and do the census. Any other comments?
Mr. President, should be made aware to, based on ethnicity, there is no danger, as it said in the proclamation, Title 13 protects everyone. So, do not be afraid to fill out the census. It's a short, I believe, Janet, nine questions on the paper copy that we're going to get starting March 12th. There's only nine questions on the census. So, shouldn't take us all, any of us, all about 10 minutes to fill that thing out.
And you can do it online now.
Right. Right.
And in fact, my office is, will be providing laptops for those citizens who do not have access to a computer and can come in and will assist you on how to do that in the Clerk Treasurer's office.
And we don't want to lose to Hobart, Crown Point, or Sherrville, or Gary. So, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item two in that contract for Broadway and 73rd to U.S. 30 sidewalk project. Madam Clerk Treasurer.
Yes.
This is just approval, right?
I believe it is just an approval.
Mr. Reardon, would you like to fill in for Steve King?
Yes. Big shoes to fill. I'll try, Mr. President. The town typically annually partners with the state, and this is such an application. This is, in essence, a continuation of a project, I believe, that was started several years ago. And what's before you is a lot of paperwork, but the bottom line is, is that with your approval and subsequent signature, we'll be able to continue this project. The town receives up to 90% of this project subsidized through the state. As you can see, it's a contract for Broadway from 73rd Avenue to U.S. 30 sidewalk project. And with your hopeful signature, we'll be able to get this down to the state so we can initiate the project in the coming months.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve, please.
Second. Motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Pettit for approval. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. There's another item I wanted to add to under this particular part of the agenda, and that's the discussion of the Safe Haven Baby Box. We talked about it in the workshop, and we've done some research. We have the fire service willing to take care of the annual alarm fees. We have a contractor, 800 board up, United Services in Griffith, that has offered to do the installation at no charge to the town. We checked with Madam Clerk Treasurer's office and Cindern Associates, where we can set up a donation fund. And I just received a letter last week from the Women's Guild, Men's Club, and Knights at Columbus, the St. Andrews Church on 73rd Avenue. And they're very interested in donating to our cause to bring a baby box to the firehouse at 73rd Avenue. We have funds available and would like some information concerning how quickly we can help you make this happen. Please contact us to get the ball rolling. So, I think at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion that we just proceed with the process. I have the contract here from the Safe Haven Baby Boxes, which Chief Erga supplied. And at this point, just to kind of move forward with this, have the attorney check it out, and then come back to the council for final approval.
Motion to proceed.
I'll make a motion for the baby boxes to be approved.
Second. Okay, motion is second to forward this on to the attorney and proceed with the project?
To the attorney.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. That's how quick I'm going to forward that to you.
Well, thank you. That's instant.
Thank you, counsel. Moving on to the consent agenda tonight, we have the accounts payable voucher approval for March 10th and the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of February 25th. What is your pleasure?
So, motion.
Second. Motion from Mrs. Uselak, second by Mr. Spann, for approval of the consent agenda. Open for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing committees, budget and finance. Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. Want to make a motion to table a resolution that we had with the finance committee with Don Spann, Marjus Uselak, and myself for the resolution from the Clerk Treasurer. She actually, Clerk Treasurer actually asked us to table it as well.
Second. Okay, could we have the resolution number, and also would you mind waiting until we reach that point on the agenda?
Okay.
We'll just take this as your report that you're intending to do that?
All right, yes, that was my report.
Okay.
And actually, as the finance chair, that was our recommendation to table that particular resolution.
Okay. When we get to it tonight, then let her know. I'll call.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing else tonight, sir.
Public Works, Mr. Minchuck?
Yes, sir. Our street department is gearing up for the spring cleanup program this year, for the first year in a long time. They're also going to do a branch pickup program. They're really taking charge. They're going to try to clean up the best they can. All the details of the spring cleanup program, breaking down to times, dates, locations, and all the other details will be in the newsletter that's about to come out here. I know, I just reviewed a draft, so hopefully it'll be coming out here within the next week or two.
Yeah.
Other than that, that is all, sir.
Thank you.
Plus, they are doing a good job of the census census.
Yes, they are.
Yes.
We'll get to that in a moment.
Oh, excuse me, Sean. Sorry about that.
I did have a question.
Mr. Pettit may have some suggestions.
I didn't know we were going to get to that.
Sensitive about the census.
I know.
You've got to make census.
I'm census about the census.
Well, thank you, but Mrs. Uselak, you can...
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. President. I was going to talk about the newsletter that we're sending out for spring cleanup. I just want to, even though I know it's in the draft form, I still want to look at it to see if there's some things I can put in there as well for the area, because I know we're looking at the whole town, which is, really needs to be cleaned up. So, I just wanted to maybe add something to it. I think it's in a good form right now, but before they send it out, I'd like to add something to it, if you don't mind, sir. Thank you.
I got a little...
Mr. Spann?
Neighbor came by my house while I was talking, and he's got a plow gash in his yard by his driveway, and I told him I'd take care of it, but we normally do that in the spring. I thought it was a little too early.
No.
So, I will get into it and get it taken care of. I don't know if anybody else is getting into it.
I know, I think, I know what you were saying, Don. I think when our snowplow sometimes, when it's snow, of course, you can't be perfect in your...
Right.
When you plow snow, and it did mess up one of his constituent's yard, and he was just saying, basically, he wanted to address that, even though normally they address it in the spring. I think we pretty close to spring here. So, I think, Mr. Spann, if I could help speak for him, want to get that taken care of. Thank you.
That's right, you were there.
I was, sir.
I would suggest, counsel, to make a list of the addresses, and we'll make sure that Kevin Markle gets it, and make sure they're on the seating list.
I'll call Kevin.
I have to add too that I had Crescent Lake cleaned up last week through Kevin with the different snowplow incidents. Okay, thank you.
Moving on, Mrs. Uselak, council affairs.
No report at this time.
Personnel policy and employee benefits, Mrs. Uselak.
Yes, I will be having a meeting possibly next week, if we could get it in, Pat, regarding looking at the applications of the police chief, and those matters. So, we'll be doing that possibly.
Thank you. Moving on to public safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Yeah, we've been real busy. We met yesterday with the fire department. We had some budgetary issues we were going over, as well as a personnel issue. That meeting came to a mid-conclusion, and we're going to continue to another meeting to finalize some things. Once I get some answers, I'll go ahead and report them back to you, sir. Moving along, the application process for a police chief has been completed. Pat, good job on all that. We thank you for your help there. At this time, Pat, when I talked to Pat yesterday, I believe it was, we're going to go ahead, forward all the resumes over to the council and to the commission for our review prior to the interviews. Per the town policy, we're going to go ahead and do the internals first. If we find a solution there, great. If not, then we'll move on to the externals. So, I will turn that over to Ms. Uselak and the personnel committee. Hopefully, we'll get those interviews done next week, possibly the week after, whoever works better. And I believe, let me double-check my notes here, sir, that is all.
Under your committee, Jeff, I do have one, a couple comments here. We did send out an email about the coronavirus.
Yes.
And I think that we'd be prudent to move on some of those suggestions.
Yes.
Instead of waiting for our next meeting. So, just to refresh what those items were, it was limiting town hall hours, the openness to the public to 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., which cuts down the amount of time that the public will be coming in. Then at 2:00, we were going to add another sanitation and surface cleaning by our cleaning crew to make sure all the surfaces are clean and sanitized. We were going to add some hand sanitizer stations throughout town hall, which I believe Linda was able to order today or is going to. And I think for now, that might be enough for us to kind of take some precautions about the coronavirus. And we all see the news, we all hear what's happening. A lot of conferences are being canceled, flights are being canceled, so there's a lot of things going on, and I think this will give us a start toward this. I know everyone's shared some information they received, and I think this is a good start for us, but I'm open to any of the suggestions, but I would entertain a motion tonight.
Mr. President, the public safety committees kind of talked to each other a little bit about this. We didn't have a meeting, because the email came out, we all reviewed it. I personally think it is a good idea. It's always better to be proactive than reactive. This is getting closer and closer and closer to us, and you just never know what's going to happen until it happens. So, I think being proactive here is a very smart decision on our behalf, if we choose to do so, and I would go ahead and make the motion that we do do this, and any amendments or any proaction, whatever we have to do along the line. Let's get it done.
Second. Was that you, Richard?
No.
Post by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Spann. Go ahead, Rich.
Sean.
One thing, if you're going to go from 10 to 2, which is a good time, but I think that maybe one or two days during the week, you need to go from 12 to 4:30 or whatever, because the people at work, that's not going to be able to get there, you know, at 2:00, before 2:00.
So, we have to make changes to adapt more to our needs?
I understand that if we can, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 10 to 2, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday, 12 to 4:30, or something like that. That gives, that's an opportunity for everybody. Otherwise, I would have been limiting this.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a great point. Jeff, would you just amend your motion to include the...
My motion has already been amended, or I already included that. If we have to change, this is something we can't just set rules on and stick to them. It's something that's going to have to be flexible and changeable over time.
Okay.
And in my opinion, we'll do that under your direction, sir.
Okay. Pat, did I cover every point that we wanted to address?
You did.
Okay.
The other thing, Mr. President, if you look, IU has basically shut down all the campuses.
Yeah.
Just shut down today.
It just happened.
And, you know, we're waiting to hear what Ivy Tech's going to do. But, you know, all of the major universities are taking a proactive approach.
Elementary school, too.
And I think that that's the right thing to do.
Hey, Boston shut down the St. Patrick's Day parade.
Sure did, and that's amazing.
It's crazy.
That's amazing. So...
We're talking specifically about town hall here, because most traffic comes through here with all the multiple offices. We already talked to Jan. Jan is making moves in Parks Department to take care of her facility and her openness, et cetera.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I should have talked to you about this, sir. They're just popping in my head now. I think during the public hours, if we can reach out, and if it's feasible, and if we can do it, maybe to see where these babies can sit out for, for the four hours, or just walk around the building to make sure everybody's okay, make sure that things are being here, too, just temporarily.
Well, we did talk, I mean, the actual front doors will be locked with proper signage, and then at 10:00 or at noon, we will actually unlock the doors. Of course, employees will be here.
Yeah.
You know, the whole time, so, yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I just have one comment.
Can.
Can we make sure that the inner doors are locked and not the outer doors, in case somebody has to access the police department?
Yeah, just the inner doors, Jan, for sure.
Okay.
We can't even lock the outer doors, believe it or not. They're set up to...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Anything else, counsel? Hearing none, other comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uselak?
Uh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Jan had called me, and the park equipment for Crescent Lake has arrived, so they will be working on that. And Jan has also received a letter from Craig Sandstrom. He's the superintendent of planning and natural resources in the county.
Correct, Lake County Parks.
Do you want to present the gist of that letter?
Lake County Parks recognizes a piece of property that's in the Devonshire subdivision. It is south of the railroad tracks, and it butts up to Turkey Creek. Most of the area is wetland, and they're asking that the town of Maryville donate that land to them, as we are not doing anything with it, and they want to continue with a wetlands project there. You will be receiving a letter from their board very shortly after the meeting. I'll present it to the rec. committee, they'll review it, and then present it to the council.
That's the Lake County Park Board, right?
Lake County Park Board, correct.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, just have Lake County Parks Recreation Department either reach out to me or reach out to Pat, because they're going to have to do the surveying on it, and they're going to have to get a correct legal description, so that it's transferable in a warranty deed from the town to Lake County Parks Recreation Department, if that's the direction the council wants to go.
Okay, upon receipt of the letter, Mr. Reardon, I will forward it to your office. Thank you, Ms. Orlich.
I do have one other item for that. I did share with Mrs. Uselak the request from the Ridgwood developers to donate those two lots to the town for a, not a playground, but a park with trees and a bench.
Oh, for the subdivision?
Yeah. And I don't think Mrs. Uselak received that information, so would you mind coordinating with her, so we get it on their agenda?
You did not get the information.
No, but Rick and I talked. Yeah, I did discuss it a little bit on the phone with you, and asked if our next meeting I would provide you with all the information.
Well, I want to have the meeting first.
Okay, yeah.
Then we'll...
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mrs. Uselak?
No, that's it for now.
Thank you. Moving on, environmental affairs, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do see that actually, Lake County Southwest District's not on here, so I guess I'll move what I want to say under the environmental affairs report. We're having a meeting on the 17th of March. It's called the Grants and Finance Committee for the Lake County Southwest District, and that meeting will be about to review the committee approval, community recycling grants report, that each community actually has to do before they get the money. I think Pat said that he had that report completed. So, we'll get a chance to look at it on the 17th, as well as other communities, so we can make approval to the full board, which will meet again on the March 19th. That's all I have for the environmental committee.
Thank you. Questions, public relations, and Census 2020, Mr. Pettit?
Yes, Mr. President, we had the proclamation earlier, as you all know, and if you've seen, and my colleague in competition's in the front row, so he'll get a kick out of this. Lamar has put up the space available advertising, and as a good neighbor throughout Lake County, we did it in all the communities, so Portage and wherever we have a digital display, Lamar's posting the census, and we took your artwork, Mr. President, cut out the town seals and put the different seals in for, so there was no proprietary copyright, right?
Use what you need, Sean, that's okay. So...
We need to talk.
Just see me tomorrow, don't worry.
Well, you can ask Mr. O'Donnell what outdoor one might want to do. Anyways, also, as Rick alluded to, there are yard signs out. At this time, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we relax the yard sign standard in our sign ordinance, Sheila, that we allow the public works employees to continue to put out the census yard signs within town rights of way where deemed appropriate. So, that's my motion.
I second that.
So, Mr. Pettit, like we always do, it's only for census signs, only for this time through April.
Yes.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Pettit?
Um, I think that's, unless you have anything else, Rick, that you're knowledgeable. I know Nick Elliott had asked what else we were doing in town. I received an email from him and told him that we had the billboard advertising going up. I think all the banners have been put up, I noticed, across Broadway and at different municipal buildings, so...
You might want to tell them that the Clerk Treasurer's office will supply the laptops and help community members fill out the census.
Right.
I think that's a big thing.
Chaz and Karen, you got that?
Then we still have to organize a time where you and I could go and see Mayor Uran, and we're going to go see Mayor Prince.
Well, they're waiting on us, actually.
With your boxing gloves, so.
Ah, I think you'll have to give me...
Oh, we stored them for you.
I think you'll have to bring me some headgear there, too, because I think it's going to be some punches thrown.
You have to say that the Hobart Fire Department talked a little trash on Facebook. They mentioned Maryville, and so we did respond, and Chief Erga said he was going to also respond through the Fire Department Facebook page, so we're having a little fun.
I got 50 Allen's on you.
Now, you're really going to make me work hard.
For the baby box, no doubt.
And it goes without saying, I think all of us know, on a somewhat quasi-political side on elections, we do have national elections this year. We will, those of us that are precinct committeemen, I got my letter in the mail, to set up our polling place, and obviously encourage the residents to get out and vote for all the candidates. Lot of changes on the national scene in the last two weeks. Um, a lot of changes on the national scene in the last two weeks, uh, with some of the candidates, so, um, I don't think we close on Election Day by the calendar. We don't close on.
Our office does because we're a polling place.
You're a polling place.
So we open and close for them.
Right, so, so that's all I have for that.
The date of the election? May?
May.
May, I'm waiting for you to say.
The first Tuesday after the first Monday. May fifth, I believe, is the, is the Indiana primary, yes, so.
Well, Mr. Pettit, please continue with your economic development report next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. We had an economic development committee, um, before this meeting. Uh, we had a couple, three petitions, uh, two were tabled, uh, for two weeks from, uh, tonight, and then Mr. Riordan is going to be working on the third, uh, which will come back to the council in an ordinance form, uh, to grant a tax abatement for a project, uh, here in Maryville. Uh, the other item I have, Mr. President, uh, as everyone is aware, a couple of weeks back, we made a motion, uh, to have, uh, Mr. Svetnov advertise, uh, for the sale of the three acre tract, which is Lot Two at the Maryville Community Center, and the deadline was four thirty, uh, last Friday. Everyone's got a copy of the letter at their place. It's from Epic Center, Indiana, uh, two fifty-five Alpharezzo Street, uh, dated March sixth, twenty twenty, to whom it may concern. Thank you for your consideration of the bid for the following legally described parcel of land, Lot Two in the Maryville Community Center subdivision, as shown on Book one thirteen, page twelve, recorded as document twenty twenty zero zero six six eight two on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty, in the office of the recorded Lake County, Indiana. Number one, Epic Center, Epic Center, Indiana has preliminary plans and bids from Chester Construction for a roughly sixty thousand square foot facility that would include basketball and volleyball courts, as well as commercial space for various tenants in the health, wellness, family activity, and sports related sectors. Epic Center, Indiana is willing to negotiate a purchase agreement with the town of Maryville with a minimum purchase of twenty eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents per acre. Epic Center, Indiana would be willing and open to ideas of the town that would help, would help mutually benefit all of the surrounding areas, as well as offer egress and parking for the above, uh, described property. Number four, Epic Center, Indiana would be willing and able to negotiate terms of covenants and restrictions for the property that would allow all activities related to hosting youth sporting events, community events, and the operation of a community, a commercial retail center. Number five, Epic Center, Indiana would like to negotiate on closing and possession of the property contingent on finding favorable finalized building plans and financing for the construction and operation of the building. We appreciate your consideration and would be happy to discuss further if deemed necessary by the town council and its agents. Sincerely, Grant Bell, Epic Center, Indiana managing member. At this time, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to instruct the town attorney to begin developing a purchase agreement and negotiating the final purchase price of the three acres at the community center between the town of Maryville and Epic Center, Indiana.
Most from Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzlak, to continue forward with the sale of land to Epic Center, Indiana. Discussion.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say, uh, being the councilman from Ward Three, we 'd be more than happy to have this in our, our ward and we're looking forward to seeing it go up.
I have a question for Jan. Do we have any concerns at all that they're going to be offering a couple similar services, meaning basketball and volleyball?
We have discussed that in the past and, um, it's going to be a, a unique type of a joint venture, so when they have volleyball or basketball tournaments that come in, they're possibly going to require additional courts for either volleyball or basketball, and at that time, they will rent the courts from us, so it will be a win-win for both of us.
Vice versa as well.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
This, obviously, Mr. President, would in talk, I'm sorry, in talking with, uh, Sheila, uh, part of the entitlements and the due diligence purchase agreements is sweating, sweating, setting off, thank you, uh, would require a special exception to be granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals and then on to the town council, correct, Joe?
Correct. And the, the purchase agreement would read, it was necessary in contingent on all approval from the BCA and Plan Commission.
Right.
Worked that into the agreement, so.
So then some of these, uh, items actually become part of the covenants that are going with the property, and we talked about that.
Yep. Covenants or zoning commitment or whatever instrument hooks on.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
All right.
Councilman Hardaway. Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Cautiously, yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
All in favor?
Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you.
Moving on to utility liaison, Mr. Span.
I have no report at this time.
Abandoned properties, Mr. White.
Uh, no report at this time, sir.
Town identity and beautification, Mrs. Yuzlak.
No, we did not have a meeting yet.
Okay.
No report, thank you.
I did have a question on that, Mr. President. I want to know, um, I think it's a really good committee, the town identity and beautification. Is there a way we can, because there's other people that ask me, could they sit on that board because they're interested in seeing the town go to more beautification?
Yeah, you had asked that at the last meeting and Mr. Bella said yes, President Bella said yes. I think you had brought in, what, two names?
Uh, two different areas, yeah, but two, two different names, yes.
Okay, well, we could squeeze in a meeting, then we will have them there, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
I think we have a lot of topics to talk about that we sit down, okay?
Okay.
Moving on then to community center, recreation center, Mr. Pettit, Mr. Minchuck.
Go ahead. Thank you. Um, Thursday night at five o'clock, we have another committee meeting. Uh, we are going to, uh, review and make the final, uh, assessment of the sponsorship levels, uh, for naming rights within the, the community center itself. They have been very, very active out there, even in the, the weather that we've had come and go, and I, I noticed driving by, uh, they're pouring concrete, uh, I think for some of the foundations and, and working on that. Uh, we're going to be discussing the monument sign, uh, Thursday night. We're going to be discussing the kitchen situation. I know, Mr. Bella, uh, you set that up, thank you very much, um, and we'll go through some of that. Um, I'm still waiting to hear back from the large main sponsor, uh, that we're seeking, uh, for naming rights on the building. Once I have that, uh, I will share that with the committee, uh, as well. I've reached out to a couple of people trying to set that meeting up. We're waiting to hear back on that. So they continue to, uh, to progress, uh, rapidly on that.
Department head reports. Sheila or Jan, anything to add to the good of the order here today?
No, sir.
Anything we missed?
Uh, Mr. President, I do have a few things on my agenda. Um, years ago, there was a park placed in Turkey Creek and it was formerly known as Petrush Park. The address is actually fourteen oh three West Sixty-third Avenue, and I believe that's your word, is that correct?
Oh, Sixty-third?
Sixty-third.
You know, Leonard's, I think.
Leonard, okay.
That'll be your Leonard, I think.
Um, fourteen oh three West Sixty-third Avenue is actually not a physical home. It's actually a backyard behind a home. And the park was located back there. Due to the equipment, uh, the playground equipment, uh, being non-compliant with ASTM standards, uh, we removed the equipment. Uh, we did not replace the equipment because there is no access to that park other than walking in between two homes. I recently found out that the property was never owned by the town of Maryville. It was owned by Ridge Road Investment Company. I spoke with, I've been working with Craig Zanstra and, um, they actually, Lake County Parks actually picked that up in a tax sale. So now their property is owned by, um, Lake County Parks and, um, they're going to clean it up a little bit for those golfers that slice their ball to the right side of the golf course. Except for Sean.
I have a hook, right, Rick?
So I just, just want you to know that is currently now off of our inventory and it never was deeded to the town of Maryville. So that's that. Um, the second thing I would just like to bring up is, um, I received a phone call today from the Post Tribune and they asked if they could do an on-phone interview with me. Their concerns or their interests were if we operate a senior center, if we have senior activities, and if we have activities for youth and adults. I told them that we did and they asked, uh, if we were taking any precautions, uh, with the COVID nineteen virus. And we let them know of our disinfection and sanitation process that we had begun, uh, about two to three weeks ago. And we also let them know that if there is an active case in Lake County, Indiana, um, we will be halting our programming until further notice. And that is, uh, the end of my report, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Jan, did you hear today that they found a case in Crown Point?
Well, the, the.
Is that true? Or is it just exposure?
It was just exposure.
Exposure and monitoring it?
That's just an exposure to a child from the Avon, uh, school system down in Indy. Yes.
They don't know that the Avon student has it either, do they?
No, he is, I thought it was, wasn't it? It was tested positive.
He tested positive.
If I'm not mistaken, it was one Avon student and his brother's being tested right now, they don't know.
So we will be taking precautions and if we halt our programming, I will send an email to the town manager and the rest of the council and let them know that. And we will also inform, um, all of our users. Um, currently, we do provide a senior lunch with Meals on Wheels and, um, my assistant, Ruth, uh, had a conversation with Jody today and we canceled, uh, this month's luncheon and, uh, depending on how things progress, we'll determine whether or not or when we start up again.
Yeah, I can't stress enough that Mr. Minchuck was right. This is going to be a very fluid situation and we will keep the residents informed as best we can through the website, through signage postings, but we're going to react as we need to, to try to keep everybody safe in town. Visitors to town hall as well as our own employees at town hall, so.
If I just might add something, Mr. President.
Sure.
We also ask the public to work with us. There's going to be times where we're just going to have to shut the doors. There might be times we might have to do things that is not going to be, uh, helpful at all to you. Please bear with us. They're difficult times, but we're being proactive for the best for our children, the best for our seniors who are, are most affected by this virus, so please bear with us. I know sometimes you might come here, door might be locked, you'd be kind of angry and storm off, or something we might have to do to prevent things, but I think the safety of our kids, the safety of our seniors is most important here, and if we have to sacrifice a few things, then let's do that.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else? Sheila?
We couldn't have stopped.
Oh.
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay. Um, I know that the court will be severely impacted by the hours. Do we have a timeframe, um, as to when you're going to implement the protocol? Because we have court Monday morning, we have court tomorrow, we have court Thursday, and our hours of Rockaway are really later than what the town is opening, when we start at five, so we have one that's going to affect, more importantly, the length of time that we're going to make, as needed.
We will let you know, I did speak with, um, Judge Jean today and we talked about maybe starting next week and limiting some of the times for the courts and the amount of people that could come into the building. And so we need to work out those details with the judge and as soon as we do, I mean, he's going to let you know. Absolutely. Oh, sure, oh, okay. Yep.
Mr. President, I don't, I don't want to sound panicky here, but do we get face masks or something? Because I don't know where this thing's going. I mean, we started in Marion County, then we went down to Avalon, now we're in Crown Point.
They really don't recommend, um, that healthy people, uh, wear face masks. Hand washing, uh, hand sanitizer is key to this virus. I can tell you that a New York suburb or community has already quarantined the entire community. That's a first in this, in the United States, I believe.
We are, we are trying to order, um. No, more sanitizer and gloves for our, our employees because we take money and so it does, the virus is transmitted with the money, so I did institute that.
I can supply you a box until you get your order. I'll drop it off to you tomorrow. As a matter of fact, I'll drop a couple of boxes off too. At town hall, we've kind of stocked up on sanitizers and gloves.
We deal with a lot of cash every day and it's, lives on that, so.
But we clean our surfaces.
We might have to cut back on meetings. I'm not serious about that.
Leonard, you could wear a mask and come to the meetings.
Cut back our. I was trying to say we have a lot of meetings.
Yes, I, I, I got the gist. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have ordinances on second readings, ordinance twenty dash zero one.
Madam Clerk, Treasurer. Um, this is an ordinance amending ordinance twenty, no, I'm sorry, ordinance numbers twelve dash thirty-five and thirteen dash oh-four, being an ordinance establishing a registration inspection program for rental housing units located within the town of Maryville and establishing minimum standards for rental housing within the town of Maryville and repealing all town code sections and ordinance or parts thereof and conflict therewith. Um, this is the ordinance that we had spoken about, um, briefly at the last meeting after we've had several of our residents come and complain about the living conditions where they are staying. And we had meetings with our attorney and, um, president and, um, planning director, um, Vice President, um, White and some others, uh, in our concern to make sure that our residents here in Maryville are protected and safe. And so this, um, ordinance puts more teeth into the ordinance that we originally had. We did look at some other ordinances, um, and within the state that had, um, a lot more bite. Um, I want to commend, um, Attorney Svetnov because we kind of, we went back and forth with it, with the, with the citizens and the residents and we did everything we could to be as, um, as responsive as possible and he really did a great job, um, not only with this ordinance, but also with the letter that he sent out to address your needs.
Someone. Second.
We have a motion on the floor for approval of ordinance twenty dash zero one on second reading. This is a second reading ordinance, so we will open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this particular ordinance this evening? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, the council. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, please roll call.
Councilman Span.
All right.
Councilman Hardaway.
No.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
One motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance twenty dash zero two. It's an amendment of the salary ordinance. Madam Clerk, Treasurer.
Yes. Um, this is an ordinance, um, basically a housekeeping matter in which I've created, I've asked the council to create a position of payroll administrator in my Clerk Treasurer's office, uh, with a bi-weekly pay of one thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. It allows me to create a line item by which I'm going to be paying the payroll administrator, um, instead of them having to be paid out of another line item. That limits, would not allow her to make this amount of money, so. So I'm asking-
Basically, this is the housekeeping that we have to do based on what we already approved at the last meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council?
What did you say? Your position?
Yes, a newly created position. I mean, she's, she's doing what she's already done. It's just the name, we added a name for it so that the position would be paid more than the other positions. Yes, yes. Oh, yeah. Kathy Pettit. Kathy Pettit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor for approval of ordinance 20 dash 02. Motion by Mr. Spann, seconded by Mr. White. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, it is a second reading on a, on a ordinance. I will open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this particular ordinance? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Councilman Spann. Councilman Hardaway. Councilman Minchuck. Councilwoman Yuzelak. Councilman Pettit. Councilman White. And President Bella. All in favor, motion carries.
Seven zero, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, resolution 20 dash 10. A resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending resolution 20 dash 04 encumbering monies from the 2019 budget into the 2020 budget year.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Minchuck, seconded by Mr. Spann for approval of resolution 20 dash 10. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolution 20 dash 11. Resolution transferring monies within the 2020 budget.
Mr. President, I believe this is the same one I like to table, this, this resolution?
This would not be the one that you were referring to earlier, I don't believe.
House, go ahead, motion to approve that one.
That's the only other resolution we have. Was it? One of the two.
Yeah, that's right.
The 20 dash, oh.
Where is that?
Mr. White, I'll accept your motion. You lay this on the table.
I just thought I was losing it for me.
Thank you. We're a team up here.
Absolutely, sir.
We have a motion and a second by Mrs. Yuzelak. It takes presidents to lay this on the table, resolution 20 dash 11. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. White.
Welcome, sir.
Moving on tonight to BZA actions, Board of Zoning Appeals. We have two petitioners on the agenda.
Yes.
Ms. Sheila.
Hey.
Something on the agenda for you.
Petitioner Louis O'Donnell, owner Louis O'Donnell the fourth, I'm sorry, requests variance of use approval, purpose to allow LED advertising display, location 7606 East Lincoln Highway, zoning C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Case number Z3UV22020. The staff report reads as follows. Petitioner is requesting a variance of use approval from section 21 dash 189 eight to allow a LED advertising display to be located at 7606 East Lincoln Highway in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner would like to construct a new monopole 14 by 48 LED advertising display sign. The proposed replacement sign will be constructed to current code for wind loads and engineering standards and match the look of newer signs. The signs will replace an existing display I-beam structure. Advertising signs are a growing trend as a replacement to static copy billboards. They can relay emergency information including severe weather, amber alerts, silver alerts to the area. An upgrade is essential. Petitioner will advertise town events. Other conditions placed on the approval was the petition, for this petitioner only at this location only and for this use only, and approval from the Department of Transportation.
Are there any safety concerns? Did we talk about this one?
This sign?
Last, last meeting. I mentioned it or something? This sign?
No, not this sign. Mr. O'Donnell was in the audience.
Got any questions on it? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Louis O'Donnell, 3636 East US 12, Michigan City, Indiana. I've been in the billboard business approximately about 22 years now. I know Sean because they are one of my competitors. I'm just the smaller guy, they're the, they're the bigger guys in town. But I don't know if, did they receive a package with pictures?
Yes, they did. Everyone has.
I brought some extra in case you guys wanted to see what we're looking at. What I have is an I-beam, an older I-beam structure with two faces on each side. What I'm looking to do is make it one face on each side and a unipole structure so it's more conforming to the existing code that you have now and it'll match what all the other signs along US 30 look like. Mr. President, since this is ironically, since this is in my ward and, and yes, Lou is, is competition to Lamar Outdoor, for the official record, I'm going to abstain. I've abstained for every billboard vote since I've been on the council. I would be hypocritical if I said otherwise because I have, I have a new structure going up at the dental clinic just down the road from Lou. So there, you know.
Motion to approve. We have a motion on the floor for approval of this BZA action. We have a second by Mr. Spann, motion by Mr. Minchuck. Sorry, Sean, you got cut off there.
It's okay. It's okay. FYI, Lou is also the mayor of New Buffalo, Michigan. And I won't ask you what party you're from, Lou. But there's seven, eight Democrats sitting up here. You get pretty big in the summertime. Yeah, we go from 2000 to about 27, 30.
Yeah, we're up there quite a bit.
Any other discussion?
I don't know if I can get a parking space in Buffalo.
Hearing none. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, could you call the roll, please?
Councilman Spann. Councilman Hardaway. Councilman Minchuck. Councilwoman Yuzelak. Councilman Pettit. Councilman White. And President Bella. Six votes for yes and one abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the Calumet Park Cemetery petitioner, Gary Potts. Sheila?
Yes, petitioner Gary Potts, owner Calumet Park Cemetery, request a variance of use approval to allow a LED message center at 2305 West 73rd Avenue, zoning R1 Residential Zoning District and case number Z1UV12020. Staff report reads petitioner is requesting a variance of use approval from section 21 dash 189 eight to allow a LED message center to be located at 2305 West 73rd Avenue in a R1 Residential Zoning District. Calumet Park Cemetery would like to add a 4 by 12 electronic message center to a existing freestanding sign. The existing sign is 180 square feet. The square footage sign would be, the total square footage would be 228 square feet, feet total. Calumet Park would like to inform the general public of useful information regarding Calumet Park Cemetery and will promote town events when requested. And the conditions on this sign placed on by the Board of Zoning Appeals, they must remove the directional sign that's already on the sign and also to advertise town events when requested.
Thank you.
Mr. Potts is in the audience.
Your Potts?
Good evening, Gary Potts, owner of professional permits located at 58171 Dragonfly Court in Osceola, Indiana. She summarized our petition quite well, so I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
I do have a question, Mr. President. I was just going to ask, when I see a lot of these signs, sometimes there's like a higher intensity of light emanating from this kind of, for those people that can't see very well like myself, it kind of, too bright. Is there ways that the luminance, for better lack of words, is there a way that you can actually crank down or dim them down or is it just one set pattern of?
No, those are adjustable. We can set it so that the brightness will go down at night. Obviously during the daytime you need brighter display, but at nighttime that would come down at sunset.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That's a good point though, Mr. White. I think our police cars actually do that, don't they? A little dimmer at night? Would you like to make that an additional condition?
Actually, I would. So do I make a motion to make that an additional?
Why don't you make a motion to approve it with that condition attached?
I would like to make a motion to approve Mr. Potts' petition with the part for the dimmer, dimmer lights there.
Automatic day, night dimmer.
Yes.
Second. Motion Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Spann for approval with the conditions. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Councilman Spann. Councilman Hardaway. Councilman Minchuck. Councilwoman Yuzelak. Councilman Pettit. Councilman White. And President Bella. unanimous.
Seven zero, motion carries. Old business, is there any old business before us this evening? Hearing none, new business? Any new business tonight?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to appoint Attorney Mike Deppi as the attorney for the Plan Commission and the Board of Zoning.
Second.
For Plan Commission and BZA?
And the BZA.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzelak, seconded by Mr. White. Any discussion?
I guess the only, the only thing I would ask, Mr. President, is we didn't really do a solicitation as we've done in, in previous years at the beginning of the year and contract any of our attorneys, whether it be Jim Meyer from Stormwater or Joe with, with where he's been and Susan Severson. Yeah, obviously I'm not on the Plan Commission anymore, so I don't know what the discussions have been.
Yeah, we did receive his application first of the year.
Yes.
We did.
And there is no contract involved, if that's what you were talking about contractual, no contract involved. And from what I understood, the council people that have talked about it and mentioned it, this is what they had arrived to. Am I correct?
I just assumed this was a cleanup from first of the year that we never did, but-
We never did.
I mean, I, this, with all due respect, I mean, this is the first I'm hearing of it. I mean, that's whatever the pleasure of the majority is, but we never discussed, you know, having everybody resubmit or apply for, you know, you know, we're already into the third month, the first quarter of the year. And, you know, it is what it is, I guess.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? We recognize two noes. Motion carries. Anything else under new business? Public comment? Is there any public comment this evening? Please come forward, state your name and address. No right up here at the table, please, and use the microphone. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Becky Matea. I live at 1105 Dune Meadows Drive in Porter, Indiana. The reason I'm here tonight are various, but I'm very active throughout the community. So because it's a census year and also because of the election, I'm here to help anyone who has questions. I'm also letting you know that I am part of the Man for Congress team. So I'm learning about anything that you have that's of a concern and you can relay that to me and I will take that to him for his consideration. Thank you so very much.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment this evening?
Good evening. My name is Ernestine Barnes. I am from the residence of Maryville Lake Apartment 320. This is new information that I am presenting. On 32, 33, I met with the manager of the Maryville Lake Apartment Complex and trying to resolve some of the issues because you guys have really came in and worked with us. So as me being one of the property, I mean, one of the building representative, I wanted to become a part of helping to change some things. So I met with the manager, which is Sabrina Hillier, I believe. And I wanted to make sure that we, she understood and knew what the different problems in the housing community where we live at, that she was very much aware. So I brought the pictures. I sat down with her and Mark, which is the maintenance manager supervisor. And I wanted him to understand that there was some work around the building that was not properly being done. When it be put in, it's not properly put in right. So how do they be able to know when the work is done, completed and properly? He said it was basically the tenant's responsibility to let them know when the work is completed or appropriately, properly done, which they cannot do that. We don't know if you put in a plumbing, you put it in right, you put in electricity, we don't know that. So we didn't come to an agreement. They was very disturbed with me because I brought pictures and it was of mold and different things like that. And they were telling me it wasn't mold, but it was right on the picture. That was on 33. On 35, I received a non-renewal of my lease that I am not, and I asked her, why are you not going to renew my lease? She said it was not any of my business and she didn't have to tell me why. I've never been late on my rent, always been on time. I never had a problem with the community. I work very diligently with the residents and I work with the building reps. So I didn't understand why they do not want to renew my lease. Soon after that, the next day, they start towing cars all day long. After that, they sent letters out to other residents. There's an 86-year-old woman that they sent a letter to for $70 to vacate the premises for 10 days and get out. She is 86 years old, have nowhere to go. Her son is desperately ill, they don't expect for him to live, and they sent her this letter. I took her over to the, to the complex to discuss the matter. They told her that they made a mistake and they were sorry. The letter was very rude and very disturbing to the, to the tenant, where she almost had to go to the hospital. There was another letter sent to one of the other residents of the amount of 100 and something dollars and they demanded him to come in and pay some money. And if he did not pay it, he also had so many limited days. So now letters are going out. These are not all the letters. These are just the letters that I am aware of right now since I've been searching. There are some here that had letters and they just left. So looking at your census, they're going to be low because people are moving out of Maryville because of this. They don't want no part of this anymore. And then the more that we come, you guys have been great, but now it's just to a point where we at a crossroad. We don't really know what to do. They're going in, one lady they went in, changed the locks. They can't do stuff like that, but because they scaring these people, they don't, they don't know what to do. So I don't know what to say. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm speechless.
I would like to say something, Mr. President. I think they did a really good job here, the attorney and Clerk Treasurer in creating this ordinance 2001. I think it just has to have a little time to kick in and, and I'm not certain how quickly that can be done, but what I do want to say is that as renters, whether you rent in an apartment complex or you rent a home, you have rights. You're an American, you're a huge one. And all people have rights here. And I will stand with anybody that think their rights are being violated. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, I will tell you that we did talk to the ownership and we have a pending meeting coming up very quickly where they want to sit down, talk about the problems and correct the problems. They're very eager to do that.
My name is Ernestine Barnes. I want to thank you, you guys, for your help and especially the fire department who came in and did, they did find the fine, they helped us. But I'm just saying now we are at a crossroad where things are happening. We just trying to hang in there until we can see more results.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comment this evening? Seeing none, council, what's your wishes? Oh, we have announcements, Madam Clerk, Treasurer.
We're going to have a Plan Commission workshop on March 17th at 6:30 PM. Is it canceled? Did we cancel that?
Yes, yes, the March Plan Commission meeting is, the March Plan Commission meeting is canceled. But it's still there, right? No.
It is canceled. Okay, so that's, okay.
So you didn't have a workshop, you wouldn't have a public meeting?
We didn't have.
Yeah, so I'm saying, yeah.
So we're not going to have the workshop on the seventeenth? Okay, okay. Well, that's an announcement. The MCC meeting is Thursday, March nineteenth at five o'clock PM. The RDC meeting will be Tuesday, March twenty-fourth at six fifteen PM and Town Council meeting, next meeting is March twenty-fourth at six thirty PM and we will be having a public hearing at that time regarding a resolution for the CCD funds.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.